All right, let's start this regular meeting of the Council of the City of Ottawa, November 5th, 2024. Roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Here.
Gainer.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
We have four present and one present via phone.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands on its feet, on our ground, in this moment.
I know. Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut at the minutes of a regular meeting of the Council of the City of Ottawa, Illinois, held on Tuesday, October 15th, 2024, be approved as recorded in the permanent files of the city clerk.
If I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Here.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Is there anyone wishing to appear before the council? Then we can move forward on a presentation, which is NCAT's Strategic Plan by SRF Consultants.
All right, can everyone hear me? Great. Good evening, council members and audience members as well. My name is Matthew Stegeman. I'm here on behalf of SRF Consulting, and we're working with North Central Area Transit on their strategic plan development project this year. This is a 13-month project where we'll be working with them to outline priorities for future transit improvements for LaSalle County, and so we're here to brief the council and the public on the activities that have been completed to date and those that we expect to work on in the coming year. So a little about SRF, we are a full-service transportation planning and engineering firm based out of the Twin Cities, Minnesota. We work in transit planning all around the country, but especially in the Midwest. We have a strong base of business in Minnesota and Wisconsin, but we're increasingly present in Illinois and other states around here. A little bit about North Central Area Transit, if you're not familiar with this service, NCAT is a grantee of the City of Ottawa that provides countywide demand response transit service throughout LaSalle County. Trips are available currently Monday through Friday, 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., and reservations are made two days in advance or the same day if available. And you're able to book via a web or smartphone app as well to get your ride to get where you need to go in LaSalle County. They use vehicles similar to what you see on screen, and so if you see those driving around the community, those are NCAT, and this is the service that we're working with today. So a little bit about our project, we are here to do NCAT's first strategic plan. And so when we do a planning project like this, we first start by analyzing existing conditions of the system, including the transit agency itself as well as the community needs. We then work with stakeholders to highlight those needs that are most critical and develop new alternatives or different ways of delivering transit service that can best meet those needs. And then over a year-long process, we work with the NCAT Transit Agency and the community to finalize the recommendations for a formal plan. The reason that we're here today is to engage the City of Ottawa in understanding what's going on with the project, what the intent of this effort is, and what questions we expect to answer, as well as to, you know, provide the groundwork for the City of Ottawa to be able to respond to future project developments and recommendations with a base of knowledge from this presentation. So throughout this 13-month process, we have several different phases. Throughout, we'll be engaging the public. Right now, we are working to understand the community's needs. We're also working on, you know, developing our assessment of the existing transit system, but later on in the process, we'll be establishing that framework for future transit service and moving toward completion at the end of August next year. In terms of what stakeholder and public engagement activities we're currently conducting and planning to conduct, we will be meeting with the NCAT Transit Advisory Group. That's an advisory body that provides, you know, feedback and recommendations on how to improve transit service. We'll be engaging them actually tomorrow morning to really understand their vision for transit improvements in LaSalle County. They meet quarterly, so we'll be appearing at each of their meetings over the course of this study. We're hoping to use that group as ambassadors for this project. In addition to the advisory group, we have a rider and community survey that's currently live. It's available online or in person, and I think Kim here from NCAT will have flyers here tonight on that survey. We're also appearing for the project at community events. We were out at Bergu Fest. Kim has represented the project at various community meetings and senior events as well. We also have public open houses that are to be scheduled for November 19th at the Community College and November 20th at the YMCA to allow the public to come and learn about this project. Key questions that we are hoping to answer as part of this strategic plan are really, what is the vision for transit in LaSalle County? How is NCAT meeting the needs for transit in the county and what aspects need improvement? What do riders value most about transit service? And how can NCAT and regional partners work together to improve transit? In terms of what we are finding in our existing conditions analysis, we are doing a robust demographic analysis, looking at population, employment, and travel patterns. And you'll see here a countywide map of zero-vehicle households in LaSalle County, but there's a whole list of metrics that we look at to understand those populations that may need transit the most. In addition to demographic, employment, and travel patterns, we also will be looking in-depth at NCAT's existing ridership data to understand how people are using the system today and understand where there might be opportunities to change the type of transit service offered or come up with other improvements that can help riders have a better experience. So some metrics that we'll look at are annual ridership. Obviously, that's been growing, as you see in the chart on the right. Those bars get bigger. We also look at things like on-time performance, cost per trip, as well as trip cancellations, denials, and no-shows, which can have an impact on the rider experience. Along with looking just at NCAT's data, we will be conducting a peer benchmarking analysis, and so we here will be examining NCAT's performance against peer systems in Illinois as well as around the country to understand where there might be areas that NCAT might be able to improve its operations or change the type of transit services it offers to better meet customer needs. We know that alongside this project, there are other things happening in the world, so this plan is not in a vacuum, and we will be exploring other opportunities that are ongoing in the area to better connect with other current or potential transportation options. So we know currently there's Amtrak in the community. There are a variety of community destinations to be served. There are also planned projects like the Greater Peoria Area Passenger Rail Service, and so our plan will want to take those into account to see how transit in LaSalle County may better connect with those future projects. After completing this full existing conditions analysis, our goal will be to put together a future service framework that reflects three main scenarios for the short term, medium term, and long term. For each of these, we're really aiming to start with a clear understanding of the community's vision for transit, values for service improvements, and priorities, and really look for those opportunities to best match the type of service that's being provided to the needs of customers. We'll also be looking at funding to understand how NCAT needs to be organized and funded in order to achieve service expansion, if that is the goal. And so we'll be assisted by partners in another firm, Nelson Nygaard, in completing this governance and funding analysis that will look at things like, how is NCAT funded for their local share of operations versus the state support and federal support that the agency receives? And the goal will be to find sustainable funding sources that can set NCAT up for success going well into the future. So all of these items will combine to deliver a final strategic and implementation plan at the end of next summer that will incorporate the results of all the extensive community engagement that we'll be completing. It'll include that comprehensive operations analysis and analysis of existing conditions. It'll include those detailed recommendations in each scenario, and it'll include those funding recommendations that can help make it all happen. So in terms of next steps, I mentioned the upcoming open houses that the public will be welcome to attend on November 19th and 20th. We'll also be looking to re-engage the city council later on in this process as we move toward final recommendations. But we appreciate the opportunity to provide this initial update. We hope that you continue to follow the project and may peruse the materials that are available here tonight. But also, in addition to that, if you on the council or any members of the public here tonight have any questions relating to this project or what analysis or opportunities might be completed or taken advantage of, please feel free to reach out to either myself at SRF Consulting Group or Kim Zimmerman at NCAT here tonight, and we are available here as well for any questions that may come up. All right.
We just got to bring up one thing, it'd be November 19th in Ogilvy at IVCC and at the YMCA in Ottawa on the 20th. Times haven't been decided yet, have they? Five to seven, okay.
Other questions or comments? Thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Next, we have a combined public hearing. If Calvin and Blair would want to come up? It is 7:12.
Hello, my name is Blair Crickle. I'm here as a community planner with the North Central Illinois Council of Governments, here to talk about the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program, the Rural Shelters component. On the topic of the amount of funds available, the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity has allocated $5 million to the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Rural Shelters Construction Program and established a grant ceiling of $2 million awarded per project. The allocation of state grant assistance is limited exclusively to the provision of stable, safe, and adequate housing with the goal of increasing shelter capacity to pre-COVID levels. Grant funds can only be used for construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or acquisition of property for the homeless shelters and related activity delivery costs. The title of this project is the Give Hope a Home Ottawa Shelter Project. The city is planning on submitting this application on behalf of the Illinois Valley Public Action to Deliver Shelter, or IVPads, and we have the executive director Carol Alcorn with us tonight. The City of Ottawa will work in collaboration with IVPads and the North Central Illinois Council of Governments and proposes utilizing the state CDBG CV grant resources to meet the needs of the homeless community as outlined in the city's homeless plan. Shelter construction and activity delivery efforts will be supervised by NCICG on behalf of the City of Ottawa and will be completed following all DCEO CDBG Coronavirus procedures. The estimated cost of construction and activity delivery is $4,194,905. The project will be funded from $2 million requested from DCEO and $2,194,905 from available funds of IVPads. IVPads has 90... 90... pardon me. $944,905 cash in hand from their designated fund and $1 million from a secured, awarded, forgivable loan through the Federal Home Loan Bank of Chicago's Affordable Housing Program and $250,000 from a certificate of deposit. On the topic of project funds and activities that will be undertaken with CDBG funds versus non-CDBG funds, the awarded Coronavirus funds will be drawn on a one-to-one basis with the IVPads funds directly towards construction and activity delivery. The scope of work consists of building an approximately 11,000-square-foot shelter designed to accommodate 100 people, located at 1120 Canal Street in Ottawa, Illinois, 61350. After the demolition of the existing shelter building is completed by the City of Ottawa, construction on the new shelter will begin. The new Give Hope a Home Ottawa Shelter will include a men's dorm, women's dorm, four regular and two large family rooms, a family-accessible and single-isolation room, communal living area room, community dining room, classroom, indoor play area, main office reception, caseworker office, laundry room, community kitchen, pantry, shower rooms, donated clothes closet, employee entrance and lockers, and mechanical and storage rooms. The new shelter facilities will assist IVPads in accommodating their clientele and increasing their resilience to COVID-19 outbreaks. This project will bring the shelter capacity from a pre-COVID 55 to a post-COVID 100, essentially doubling their capacity. On the topic of plans for minimizing displacement as a result of grant-assisted activities, no people will be displaced as a result of this project. Furthermore, the city has an anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan on file. As part of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, Congress appropriated funds to the U.S. Department of Housing and Rural Development for allocation to cities and states through the CDBG program. DCEO then distributes the funds throughout Illinois. The funds dispersed by the state to be used for rural shelters must meet the national goal of benefiting 100% low-to-moderate-income individuals. The benefit area of this project is the entire city of Ottawa. On the topic of the estimated amount proposed for activities that will benefit LMI individuals, 100% of the requested $2 million in CDBG CV funds will benefit LMAI individuals in Ottawa. Community development and housing needs. Now I'm going to go over this list of community development needs, and this is meant to serve for this program as well as the program that we are about to discuss, the Public Infrastructure Program. This list is a comprehensive list that is meant to explain why these funds are needed from DCEO and why the city has prior commitments. So first on the list, we have a second wastewater treatment plant coming in at $30 million. A downtown waterfront amphitheater for $10 million. A north fire station for $12 million. South fire station for $6 million. Jackson-Lafayette Environmental Cleanup for $500,000. Renovation of Jackson Street for $1 million. Replacing electrical in Washington Park and resurfacing the park for $500,000. And peltier building demolition and securing the site for $650,000. For a total project costing $60,650,000. At this point, if there's any questions concerning the Rural Shelters grant application, project, or CDBG program, thank you for your time. Calvin, if you want to come and join?
Hello, I'm Calvin Kroy, and I am presenting on the CDBG Public Infrastructure for Ottawa. And this application will be a request of funds to separate storm sewer flows from the sanitary combination sewer systems in several areas, including Walnut Street from West Jackson to West Superior, West Superior Street from Chestnut to Walnut, and various other streets such as West Washington, West Lafayette, West Jefferson, Sycamore, and Pine, covering sections between West Jackson and West Lafayette Street. The grant will be used to cover construction costs and grant administration for these sewer separation efforts. The City of Ottawa is tackling a phased project to separate its combined sewers in line with Illinois EPA requirements. This is part of a long-term plan developed with the engineer firm Runwick and Associates aimed at reducing combined sewer overflows, improving the water quality for the Illinois and Fox River, and ensuring compliance with IEPA regulations. In this particular phase, the project involves installing over 3,400 feet of new storm sewers along with 16 manholes, adjusting water mains, and restoring waterways, or roadways, I'm sorry. The existing combined sewers will become part of the sanitary system, sending wastewater to the treatment plant before it's discharged. Additionally, the new storm sewers will carry rainwater directly to the Illinois River instead of burdening the treatment facilities. This will help prevent untreated sewage from entering the river during its heavy rains and improving public health by reducing exposure to bacteria and contaminants. By replacing aged manholes and making adjustments to water mains, the project will also address issues with leaks and infiltration that have contributed to overflows in the past. The City of Ottawa is planning a 1.24 million sewer separation project with $1 million coming from the CDBG funds for construction and grant administration, and the remaining $239,640 will be covered by the city's Stormwater Management Fund. This project is planned to separate the combined sewer systems from the Walnut Street area. Most importantly, no residents will be displaced because of this project, and the city has an anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan in place. At a recent public hearing, attendants were given the chance to ask questions and provide feedback on the project, but no comments or concerns were raised. For the 2025 CDBG Public Infrastructure Funding Round, the maximum grant available per community for construction costs for projects is $1 million, and these funds can be used for construction activities and grant administrations, just like Ottawa is doing. The Illinois Community Development Block Grant is funded by HUD and administered by the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. The program aims to benefit at least 51% low-to-moderate-income individuals. This particular project is located in Census Track 9627, Block Group 3, where the LMI percentage is 69.40% of the $1 million requested. $694,000 will go directly towards benefiting low-to-moderate-income individuals. Anyone interested in viewing the files or discussing projects can visit the regular office hours or call NCICG. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, we can close this dual public hearing at 7:21. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And on to Commissioner Michael Kraut's report.
Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut that the bi-weekly salary payroll of October 25th, 2024, in the amount of $634,152.76, be approved and warrants issued.
If I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut that the bimonthly expense report dated November 5th, 2024, showing expenses in the amount of $3,252,451.20, be approved and warrants issued.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut that the annual financial report of city clerk Shelley L. Monks for fiscal year '24 be received and placed on file.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Pearson, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut that a resolution authorizing the execution of a transit service agreement between the City of Ottawa and Streeter Public Library for NCAT be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Gainer. Roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Commissioner Michael Kraut, is there anything that you would like to add?
Nothing else, sir.
Perfect. Commissioner Gainer's report.
We have the report of the police chief for the month of October. Squad car calls, 1,690. Arrests, 338. Prisoners, 53. Sent to state institution, 7. Sent to county jail, 9. Sent to juvenile probation, 11. Central dispatch handled 886 911 calls. They also handled 19 TUCS 911 calls and also handled 4,419 administrative calls. Moved by Commissioner Gainer that the report to police chief Brent A. Wilson for the month of October 2024 be received and placed on file.
If I get a second? Michael Kraut, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor. We have the report of the fire chief for the month of October. Number of bell alarms, 2. Number of still alarms, 19. Activated alarms, 35. Number of medic calls, 307. Mutual aid, 5. Number of patients, 226. Total calls for October was 363. Total vehicle responses, 557. Total emergency overtime, 12. Structure loss was at $330,000. Contents loss, $120,000. Vehicle loss at 0 for a total loss of $450,000. Total on-residence bills for medical services, 22. Moved by Commissioner Gainer that the report to fire chief Brian Bresner for the month of October 2024 be received and placed on file.
If I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Gainer that a resolution authorizing the execution of a proposal for grant assistance services by Lexi Paul be received and placed on file for public inspection.
If I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson? Um, is there anything you wanted to say on this?
Um, it's just a proposal to write grants like we've done in the past with this company. It's been successful for us, so...
Great. Roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Gainer that the quote received from Municipal Emergency Services in the amount of $386,650 for the fire department air packs be accepted, approved, and paid for from the general corporate fund.
If I get a second? Michael Kraut, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Gainer that the quote received from SCBAS Incorporated in the amount of $13,450 for the fire department's fill enclosure be accepted, approved, and paid for from the general corporate fund.
If I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Gainer that the quote received from Stryker in the amount of $10,320.78 to purchase two stair pro chairs be accepted, approved, and paid for from the general corporate fund.
If I get a second? Michael Kraut, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Commissioner Gainer, is there anything that you would like to add?
Just a couple of things. The air packs, most of that has been paid for by insurance from an insurance claim that they were damaged on a fire. And then those stair chairs are the generosity of our state's attorney with a donation.
Onto Commissioner Pearson's report.
Moved by Commissioner Pearson that the quote received from SCP in the amount of $35,549.78 to purchase the cover for rear and pool be accepted, approved, and paid for from the swimming pool fund.
If I get a second? Michael Kraut.
So we had this on the agenda once, but it was approximately 2,600 square feet short in the zero entrance part of the pool, so that's what the extra cost is. But again, I think that this will pay for itself over the next few years.
Roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Commissioner Pearson, is there anything that you would like to add?
Nothing to add.
Onto Commissioner Baron's report.
Moved by Commissioner Baron that a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services between the City of Ottawa and Fair Graham for final approval of the phosphorus study for the existing wastewater treatment plant, which has been on file for public inspection since October 15th, 2024, be adopted.
If I get a second?
Second.
Gainer, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Baron that the quote received from Standard Equipment in the amount of $19,565.71 to purchase a wireless pole camera to be used at the wastewater department be accepted, approved, and paid for from the wastewater fund.
If I get a second? Michael Kraut. Commissioner Baron, is there anything you'd like to say on this?
Uh, it's a camera.
Okay. Just, knowing you, I wanted to ask. Roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Baron that the quote received from Drydun Equipment in the amount of $19,834, excuse me, to purchase two replacement membranes for the bladder tanks at the wastewater treatment plant be accepted, approved, and paid for from the wastewater fund.
If I get a second? Michael Kraut. I'm going to assume, Brent, that we all know what a bladder tank is, so... Roll call?
What's that?
Right, okay. Stuff wears out if you can't hear them. Roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anything you would like to add, Commissioner Baron?
I guess, I was. We can pass this on to the gather. It is fall. Leaves are falling. Please resist the urge to rake your leaves into the gutter because it's foggy, storm brings in floods in the streets. So keep the leaves on the fern, and they'll come by and suck them up. So that's all, that's mine.
Thank you very much. Hope you have a safe flight back. Onto my report.
We have the report of the registrar for the month of October. There were 62 birth certificates issued and 34 death certificates. Certified copies were issued with fees totaling $2,364. Move by Mayor Hasty that the report to registrar Shelley L. Monks for the month of October 2024 be received and placed on file.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
We need to quick readjust our population so we get the extra tax dollars based on population since it went up.
We'll work on that. Roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that the report of the Parking Administration Department showing fines collected of $2,230 for the month of October 2024 be received and placed on file.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. We have the report of the building official for the month of October. There were 11 building permits issued with fees totaling $15,066. Total number of onsite building inspections, 79. There were two floodplain development permits issued, which were no charge, six sign permits for $213, eight fence permits for $400, three new business registrations for $300, 22 general contractor licenses issued for $2,200, two electrical licenses renewed for $400, three new electrical licenses issued for $450, 29 electrical permits for $5,500. Total number of onsite electrical inspections, 48. We had 10 people take our electrical exam for $1,550. There were two plumbing permits issued, which were included with the building permit fees. Total number of onsite plumbing inspections, 15. And our construction coordinator did a total of 125 inspections with a total of permits and licenses of 98 with fees collected of $26,079. Move by Mayor Hasty that the report of building official Matthew W. Stafford for the month of October 2024 be received and placed on file.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that the report of the sidewalk program showing two participants in the amount of $1,834.50 for the month of October 2024 be approved and paid for from the general corporate fund.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for administration and coordination services with NCICG for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program, which has been on file for public inspection since October 15, 2024, be adopted.
Can I get a second? Eichelkraut. There's going to be a lot of these on here that are in reference to the shelter, and I know we just did something that sounded very similar to this at our last meeting, but we've had to change the address to it, so we're basically going through the entire process again, only with a different address. But I don't speak on the other shelter ones, all for the same reason.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for administration and coordination services with NCICG for the Community Development Block Grant for storm sewer separation, which has been on file for public inspection since October 15, 2024, be adopted.
Can I get a second? Roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for application services with NCICG for Community Development Block Grant for housing rehabilitation be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second? Eichelkraut, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for administration and coordination services with NCICG for the Community Development Block Grant Program for housing rehabilitation be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution of support and commitment of local funds in the amount of $239,640 for the Community Development Block Grant Storm Sewer Separation Project be adopted.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of a side letter agreement between the City of Ottawa and Astme Local 2819 regarding hours of work, which has been on file for public inspection since October 15, 2024, be adopted.
Can I get a second? Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution of support for Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Rural Shelters Program be adopted.
Can I get a second? Eichelkraut, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution adopting a homeless plan for the City of Ottawa, Illinois, be adopted.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of an addendum to an employment agreement between the City of Ottawa and Matt Bergwall be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Pearson. I'll just clarify that this was a clerical error when we placed the last contract on file, so we were just correcting that, and it'll go retroactive to October 15. Roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an employment agreement for Daniel Pond as Community Development Assistant be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second? Eichelkraut. We're bringing Daniel on to the economic development team. Anyone who's had to work with our upstairs knows that they're pretty swamped with everything that they're doing up there and having another hand on deck and some people to help them with some of the paperwork should free up all their time to get even more work done, so we're looking forward to it. Roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing a side letter agreement between the City of Ottawa and Astme Local 2819 regarding the facility dog handler compensation be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Eichelkraut, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Ottawa and Astme Local 2819 regarding part-time telecommunicators be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of lease agreement number 5500 between the City of Ottawa and Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the INM Canal Culvert on Canal Road be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing a highway improvement and acquisition with the Illinois Department of Transportation for property located Illinois 71 at Route 6 be adopted.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Eichelkraut. This is the property that would be where the water treatment plant is, and this is in reference to the project that's going to be coming of the replacing of the Fox River Bridge there and kind of expanding the sidewalks and so on and so forth, so they needed a little bit more property and just allowing them to do so. Roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all 2025 music performance agreements be adopted.
Second. Commissioner Eichelkraut.
I'd like to say thank you very much that we can get a head start this year. Makes it a little easier on us.
Well, I was going to say, I appreciate you giving me that power since it's you and Courtney and Elena that picking, so all I have to do is.
No, no, it's the whole special events made that actually fixed.
All I do is sign for it, so.
Right, and we go out there after they decide what they want, we have to make sure we can actually get them, because some of them are already booked for next year, so.
Well, we'll be able to get started a little bit earlier this year. Roll call.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor. Move by Mayor Hasty that the report of the zoning board appeals meeting held on Thursday, October 17, 2024, considering a side yard setback variance request for Michael Shiloh for property located at 510 Pearl Street be received and placed on file. To further move, the council concurred with the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals and the variance request to construct a pergola be approved with the condition that the side yard setback from the east property line be one foot eight inches and be contingent on the three crossbeams being cut no less than one foot inside the property line, and the follow-up ordinance be passed and approved.
Second. Eichelkraut. I'll just add that, I forget who it was that kind of shared this, but when the neighbors asked about the sign there for it, they didn't ask in a manner of accusatory and not wanting it when they knew that in regards to the pergola that was being put there, they said that they actually liked the pergola and thought that it made the neighborhood look nice, so that I will ask.
Eichelkraut. Gainer. Pearson. Baron. Mayor.
And I have a proclamation to read for National Family Literacy Day, see? Whereas National Family Literacy Day, established in 1994 and celebrated annually on November 1st, highlights the importance of family reading and the impact of parental involvement